December 14th, Toowalton City Council Work Session. Tonight, we have two items on our agenda. The first one being the Climate Action, oh, climate, Climate Action Plan Scoping.
Hi there.
Hey, Megan, how are you?
Good. So I'm Megan George, I'm the Deputy City Manager. And I'm here to introduce our Climate Research Intern Ariel Kane. Ariel is a student at Portland State University in the Master of Urban and Regional Planning Program. As a student, she's also worked for the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, the CIOC. And before then, she worked for the city of Gold Beach, Oregon. So she's a local. And before I turn it over to her, I wanted to provide a little context on tonight's presentation and discussion. So last January, the council met to reaffirm the 2030 Vision and identify priorities for the 2020 year. As per the vision statement, to be an environmentally active and responsive community, the council identified development of a climate action plan as a top priority. As Ariel will get into in her presentation, cities and organizations have chosen to tackle this in a myriad of ways. So as our intern Ariel's task was to identify existing climate action plans, review them to identify key components, and to interview cities to learn a little bit more about their different processes. So Ariel's presentation will include an overview of climate action planning and those key components. So ultimately, to develop a climate action plan, we will likely need to hire technical and engagement specialists to assist us in the process. So tonight's discussion, we're looking for direction from the city council on which components to include into Walton's plan so that we can appropriately put together that request for proposals. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ariel and let her pull up her presentation.
Thank you, Megan. So I'm gonna share my screen. Can you all see that? Yeah, okay, alright, so, thank you, Megan, and thanks, everyone, for having me today. It's been a great joy to work under Megan's direction for the last 10 weeks. And I'm excited to share with you what you've probably already seen in the report that we give you, but share a little bit more about the research overall. So, climate action just broadly has become an important topic over the last five years, especially since the Paris Climate Agreement. But despite the measures taken nationally and globally, much is left to be done as we can continue to see acute and ongoing hazards related to the changing climate. As we've seen even just this past fall with the wildfires, risk continues to increase. So local governments like the city of Toowalton play an important role in developing policy and implementing solutions that address community vulnerability and climate resilience. So, local jurisdictions routinely take steps, including climate action planning, to reduce exposure and ensure systems are pleased to respond to the changes. And then, as I just want to share a quote with you, Jaclyn Patterson, Director of the NAACP Environmental and Climate Justice Program, said, "Climate change affects all, but not all people are affected equally. So many factors such as racism, income, wealth, health, and neighborhood and city conditions will affect a community's sensitivity to climate change impacts and then the ability also to adapt." So the topics I'll talk about today go beyond just cutting greenhouse gas emissions and contributions, but we'll also cover topics such as public health and community resilience. So, I'll walk you through most of the report, and I'll be focusing a lot on the context, the general plan, composition, and development of some of the, and some of the considerations I have prepared. Yeah, so here's just the overview. And the, just to get started on the same page, a high-level overview of some of the key terms. I'll talk a lot about greenhouse gas inventories, which are the studies that quantify greenhouse gas emissions, usually within a set boundary, such as the city of Toowalton. And these are used to measure the total footprint and can be used to track changes and progress over time. Many climate action plans use these to sort of drive with data to measure progress, but not all are able to create a climate, to create the inventory or do if they are able. Climate action plans, the topic of today, are often based on those inventories, but if they aren't, they use science-based strategies that map and plan actions the city can undertake to reduce emissions, mitigate the effects of climate change, and create a more climate resilient community. Other kinds of plans do exist, and they're similar to climate action plans. Sustainability action plans address general environmental issues. Climate resilience plans focus on preparing for and adapting to climate change. And they may also be connected to the natural hazard mitigation plans and energy plans. Lastly, focus on energy efficiency and conservation more specifically. So, in Oregon, all of these different types of plans are present. Climate action plans are prevalent at the city and county level, and they're often used to meet the state's call to reduce greenhouse gas levels below 1990 levels. Most recently, the governor's executive order earlier this year, 2020, called for a reduction of emissions to 45% below 1990 levels within the next 10 years, survive 2030, and 80% below in the next 30 years. So there are a number of cities and counties that are already reaching to meet those goals at a local level with climate action plans. Ashland, Bend, Eugene, Beaverton, Corvallis, Milwaukee, Lake Oswego, as well as Multnomah and Hood River Counties. More plans are still being developed in Tiger, Gresham, Lincoln County, Salem, and Clarkamas County. Other plans that I mentioned before that touch on emissions in some capacity exist in Forest Grove, Hillsborough, Westland, Wilsonville, Tiger, and Talent, Oregon. But many of these are more internal sustainability plans or have broader environmental plans attached to them. So, as you may have noticed, a lot of the cities are in this region. So this region is pretty active in terms of sustainability. Clarkamas County specifically has just begun their engagement process for their climate action plan. Washington County convenes the partner for a sustainable Washington County community, a coalition that Toowalton does belong to. And many years ago now, 2014, Metro Committees, MPAC and JPAC worked together to adopt the transportation-oriented climate smart strategy. And, of course, the city of Toowalton, you have obviously committed to understanding what steps can be taken to support the community's vision. In 2017, the city joined the Climate Mayor's Network. And in 2019, Clarkamas County included the city in their countywide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And then through doing this research, it further demonstrated a commitment to understanding how a climate action plan can serve the community. So while a climate action plan might seem most directly connected to the environmental goals, it's really connected to all of these goals in the 2030 Vision. And with that, I will talk a little bit more about how these plans have been composed. First, talking about community-based plans and internal and operational plans. The two different types of plans are often presented together hand-in-hand or will be subsequent, for example, community plan being planned first, and then the internal or operational or vice versa. But they pretend to different strategies. So, community-based plans focus on community-based reduction of emission and then involve partners within the community. Whereas the internal plan will focus specifically on city-owned facilities and emission contributions. So these two examples of Corvallis and Ashland, supporting distributed solar energy development and enhancing production of onsite solar energy from city facilities, clearly demonstrate that there are two different priorities here. One is about the community more broadly, and one is about city-owned facilities more specifically. Other components that are usually included in these climate action plans are different components, such as the greenhouse gas inventory, which we've talked about before, it guides the type of emissions to focus on co-benefits, which are non-emission-based priorities that either the city or the community has determined. And then lastly, equity, which is often a theme throughout the entire plan, a lens that sort of helps target the distribution of the impacts and benefits, or a specific topic in the plan to help identify specific actions and opportunities for equity. Other components are going to focus on types of strategies and actions. These strategies are ones that are determined to implement the plan, and they usually fall under these three categories. Mitigation, reducing the emissions directly or mitigating the effects of those emissions. Adapting to climate change impacts. So of the impacts of the increasing climate-related events. And then sequestration, so focusing on capturing emissions that are occurring. And often, these are related to tree canopy. So the bulk of this presentation is actually related to the targeted areas for action, which we'll ask you to consider which ones are the most important to you a bit later on. So, these are the types of sections that are sort of included in all of the climate action plans. Building and energy specifically is always mentioned. It's likely because they are one of the greatest sources of emissions and are present in both community and operational plans. So, these top categories really reflect what the inventory identifies as the highest emission source or opportunities for greatest impact, greatest chance for cost-saving or cost-effective measures, and then also mitigating and adapting the impact of climate change on the community. And so these examples here really highlight the difference in different community and operational plans. So, developing a community solar project hosted at a city facility for Beaverton. Whereas for Milwaukee, some of these plans include bringing on necessary partners, such as Northwest Natural Gas, to help meet the overall community's goals. And then urban, urban farm and land use, as well as transportation are very linked. While one climate action plan might combine them, they might also be separated. But in some way, either land use or transportation will be discussed in a plan, again, because transportation-related emissions are often a large source of emissions. Additionally, rather than private or community partners, the city has more control over policies that affect these two topics. So as you can see from the urban farm and land use, these are primarily policy or code-related actions. Whereas transportation can involve partners or it might involve supporting other entities and being able to produce less emissions. Next, consumption and waste or materials management is another large contributor to emissions. And so it is also often included in climate action plans. The life cycle of goods and associated energy, as well as transportation, is considered in these actions. As for natural resources, these topics often focus around the mitigation of the impacts of climate change, either on the natural resources themselves or on how natural resources can help mitigate the impacts of climate change on the community. And so these are often where sequestration strategies appear as it relates to street trees or increasing the urban canopy. Additionally, much like the natural resource section, these two sections have less to do with the actual reduction of emissions and more to do with mitigation and adaptation to climate change effects. Resilience and public health are sometimes one in the same or might have separate sections, but they both deal with acute events, such as wildfires, and ongoing events, such as increased health impacts from heat or illness. Other targets that might be related to these are public education or in connection with health and natural resources. They might cover food and agriculture. But these seven strategies or seven topic areas are really the most prevalent in all of the plans. So next, I'd like to just show you these target areas, the plan types, and the target strategy types side by side with the cities. So through reviewing climate action plans, this was information that I was able to gather, as well as through the interview process. So, as you can see, you can see that the, sorry, they're listed by prominence rather than relation, which the presentation was done in. And this is so that you can see that buildings and energy, transportation, consumption and waste, and public health are the most common. As well, all plans included mitigation and adaptation, whereas only four of the eight included sequestration strategies. As well, every community included operational and community plans, but not always together. So some of them were done separately, either as an internal process or as a separate external process with the community. And then this is just a snapshot of some information I was able to glean from interviews. Costs here are a little bit apples to oranges. As staff turnover, access to information and the ability to share with me specifically impacted the estimates and how much I was able to really decipher in terms of share related to engagement or whether or not the inventory was a part of the overall development budget. Additionally, most plans were completed within 18 months, but some took quite a number of years. Just some notes about this table. For example, Beaverton, where I've written NA, it's not applicable. They didn't do community engagement for the climate action plan because of how it lined up with their community visioning process. They had talked about how they had found it. At the time, they thought it would be enough community engagement from the community visioning and didn't want engagement fatigue with the community. They did say that they would do that differently if they were, when they're going to do the update. As well, the greenhouse gas inventory is substantially lower number than the others that are prevalent, present here. This is because they participate in a local government initiative and ICLI, and they were able to get a substantial discount for the greenhouse gas inventory that they conducted. As well, you can see Lake Oswego is listed here, not having done a greenhouse gas inventory. And this was, in part, a choice, but also circumstantial. They had been waiting for the community greenhouse gas inventory that Clarkamas County was going to do for individual cities that Toowalton's also included in. But due to some of the limitations, it was a little unclear, but due to some of the limitations that they had with collecting data from partners to make it a really effective greenhouse gas inventory, they don't have one included with their plan. As well, the length of time for both Beaverton and Lake Oswego are really specific circumstances for them. Beaverton, in just as many years, have the same number of staff, and this really had an impact on the continuity of the plan development process. And then Lake Oswego, they were unable to hire a consultant for the majority of the process. And so it was one staff member dedicated to sustainability more broadly, but also dedicated to the climate action planning process. And so this elongated the process for them. And then some considerations for all of you. We have these two primary questions that Megan mentioned before. The first is which option, which pieces of these plans are you interested in? So just the community plan, the community plan and greenhouse gas inventory, or all three? So including the internal or operational plan? And then, which target areas are most important to the council? And that's what I have for you today. Sorry, I think I spoke a little fast, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them.
Questions for Ariel? Valerie?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering when the greenhouse gas inventory for Clarkamas will be completed? And if that's something we could use?
Well, that's a great question, and I had been pondering the latter half of the question a bit. They finished their greenhouse gas inventory for the countywide emissions. And they have calculated for each municipality based on a, basically per capita, estimating the share of each section to the population of the city. So that number exists as one number. But as far as its usability, I think that that would have to be maybe talked with, with the Clarkamas County as sustainability coordinator a bit more. Might be beyond my understanding a little bit.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nancy. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Could you go back to your next-to-last slide that had the points for consideration for council?
Yeah, so this is the second one, which target areas are most important? And then, I'm not sure which one you wanted to see, but this is the second consideration as well.
I'm sorry, I guess I have another question. Are you looking then for direction from us as to which option you'd like us to move towards, or how, how do we move forward now from where we are?
I'll go ahead and jump in, counselor. So, that's correct, we are looking for direction on two specific questions. So the first, which is shown on this screen here, is which of these components are important to include in this initial step for the city? We've sorted it into three different options because that's kind of where you can easily chunk off different parts of a climate action plan. And then the second slide, Ariel, can you move to the next one? These are the key components or targeted areas that often appear in different plans. And so the question here is a little bit more general, which is which of these are most important for you or for Toowalton to consider? Ultimately, you could say all of them are important to consider in some ways, with different degrees of importance, of course, depending on Toowalton's composition. But that's generally, if there's things that stick out that we definitely want to include or things that we don't care as much about because of, for whatever reason.
Because what we will do from here, I believe, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, is we will start to craft a request for proposal for consultants, for technical assistance for a climate action plan. And so, having your direction and guidance on these two, you know, what the options are, and then what target areas are most important, will help us start crafting an RFP.
That's correct.
I think I saw other questions, so with Valerie's hand up, and I think Roberts?
Mine wasn't up, but now I have a question. I'm wondering, like, if we mention the target areas and you do an RFP, won't there be a lot of, if we do the community plan especially, won't there be a lot of public interaction where they're helping define what areas are most important? After the fact, so they can switch somewhat? How would that work again?
Yeah, I'll jump in again, and Ariel can provide more detail on specific cities. So oftentimes, what happened or what we found in looking at how different cities have approached it in their community engagement process, they'll have identified these target areas. And then some cities have created technical advisory committees, which have a partnership of the consultants, somebody from the community and somebody from staff to kind of flesh out the details of those area and provide a set of recommended actions. And then you go back with your consultant and figure out what the emissions reduction would be if those actions were to be taken, and you compare that with your goal to kind of figure out whether or not you get to your goal in the end. So there's a push and pull, and it's a cyclical cycle, I think, for a lot of cities. That's how they've approached it.
That makes sense, thank you.
Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Ariel, I want to say thank you for your presentation. It was very well put together and delivered. And I, as a college student, I'd say you got a very bright future, so thank you for that. My question goes to either you or to staff. On the operational plan component, what do we have in place already? And would the goal be to evaluate what's been done to this point and improve upon it?
So, we have done a variety of things, and Sherilyn can speak to this in a little bit more detail. I know we've got another student working on a project to identify what we've done and what steps we can take next to advance some of those ideas. But my impression is that an operational plan would first include an inventory of what we've done and which areas would be the easiest or the quick, most bang-for-your-buck type of areas to further reduce emissions overall.
Okay, and then, similar to the question on Clarkamas County's greenhouse gas work, and correct me if I'm wrong, it sounded like they were coming up with basically a whole number and then just dividing it by the population, so not a particularly scientific or accurate study, I would think of greenhouse gases. Is Washington County doing something similar? And will it be more granular than what Clarkamas County's done?
I'll let Ariel take this one because she did speak with somebody at Washington County.
Yeah, so I would say that Clarkamas County, they did do, basically, what's the standard for creating a greenhouse gas inventory for the county level? But because of, because of the difficulties with getting specific information about each individual city, that's where the challenge lay and why they ended up just doing the sort of proportional estimates. A lot of cities did similar things, Corvallis did a similar thing as well. So it is possible to move forward with something like that. But it might be easier to have more specific information if the data-driven component is really important to council. And then regarding the Washington County aspect, they have no plans at the moment to do a countywide plan. They know that there are different cities that are already doing that kind of work, Beaverton, et cetera. But they made it sound as if maybe capacity wasn't there at the county level to be able to coordinate such an effort.
So, if we were to do a local study, would that be reliant upon emitters voluntarily providing, you know, data as to how much CO2 they're emitting? Or how does that work in general?
That's a great question. I don't know enough about the specific details of how a greenhouse gas inventory is conducted. I do think that that's something I can find more information about and share with Megan or share with you in the future.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Megan.
I was just gonna say, I think that's also part of the reason why we would lean heavily on a technical expert to determine that. And there's a few that have been used by several of the cities listed earlier in the presentation, who I think have gone through a pretty common approach to determine that and maybe have recommendations on how to best get that information.
Great, yeah, because I was just gonna suggest if we're gonna spend the money to do it, then I'd like it to be as accurate and thorough as possible, of course. So, thank you.
Ariel, can you take the PowerPoint down so I can see, folks? We're gonna have to flip back, so be ready. Other questions? Now I can see people again. Maria, and then Bridgette.
Yeah, do we have to make a decision right now? Can we just, like, review it and then kind of go back? Because they're saying which direction you want us to go. I like to carefully read what each of those things mean, what we're, we were interested in, in, for the city. And then I kind of want to categorize, not categorize, but like, what is the most important? One being the most important, I don't know, I just want to process that a little bit more before I say, oh yeah, let's do resilience and preparedness, when really, maybe that's not the case. That will be the, so I just kind of want to be able to process that a little bit more. Read, do more reading on what each of those things mean. And just before, am I, for myself, before I say, oh yeah, let's focus on this. And then maybe come back and have, like, the majority of us are focused on preparedness, or, you know, the, whatever area, and then kind of go down from that. And then, that way, it'll be a lot easier to give you direction of what to focus on. Even when we get a consultant, this is what the council wants, or first. And then this, and this, and this, second, third, fourth, kind of, I don't, I mean, I'm not just thinking that way because I don't want to commit to one thing today and then turns out that that's not the thing that, you know, we really need to commit to or work on. This is my comment, thank you. And thank you for, Ariel, for presenting. Very, very good, I like it.
I just jump in on that, Counselor Reyes. This is, it's up to the council, so with your direction, we'll move forward on writing a scope. So, a request for proposal. So, when we get to your direction, we can, we can move forward with, with writing that scope. And we can always bring that back, and we would plan on bringing that back before we release an RFP, to make sure that it captured your direction.
Bridgette?
There we go. Thank you. Now I gotta figure out how to put my little hand down. There we go. Thank you again, Ariel, for your comprehensive work. And I did read through the other, your full report as well, which was really well put together and very greatly appreciated by me. It's no secret that I'm really invested in our city doing this work. And there's a couple of questions that came up for me. One was the partnership that we have with other cities for Washington County. Can you explain a little bit more about what that is and what, where we're at with that?
I can, I can talk about it a little bit, but I don't know if Megan might know more about it than I do. As far as I know, it's a group which regularly needs to discuss the sustainability actions that they're taking. It's not climate-specific. It's not climate specific and they don't necessarily work on projects together. I know that recent presentations at the partnership and meetings have been about climate action preparedness at PCC specifically, but I don't know too much more than that.
Yeah, just a couple more details. Functionally, the way they're organized is they've got a technical group that meets on a fairly regular basis about months, a month. And then they've got an executive team that meets less frequently, so once or twice a year. Washington County has hired a staff person to maintain and operate their group. And then the representatives from the various stakeholders or cities attend and they set the agendas. So earlier this year, gosh, I think in January, potentially, they were going, doing tours of different green buildings and discussing topics that were of interest and doing kind of a round robin share. And then as Ariel discussed, it is, it is determined by what the interest of the group is. There was some discussion initially about a regional climate action plan or something of that nature. But to my knowledge, it hasn't been brought up again since that point or that initial idea.
And then who's the representative from Tuolton? Is this a community member or is this somebody from our staff or?
Staff. So Lindsay Marshall from our Information and Maintenance Services Department as the technical representative. And then I sit on the executive committee.
Okay. And I'm just curious if we could get information from you guys about the meetings and updates. So that we have a, I'd like a better understanding of, of what that is and where we're at with that. And thanks. And then my question, I, I kind of am with a lot of what I've heard so far. With one of the, the other question I had actually specifically was when we were looking at the list of priorities, where was, did sequestration fall off or is it embedded in one of those other items?
Yeah, so sequestration is just a strategy, a type of action that can be taken under the umbrella of those actions. It usually falls under natural resources, just because it's usually related. The most clearly related thing is trees, trees sequester carbon.
I just think we already have our tree thing sort of rolled out. So to be a little bit more integrated and sophisticated with what program and we already have and be more effective. I so I'm glad to know where that lands. That's an important piece to me. And I'm trying to think of the list now. I guess. I guess, yeah, I think that that answers all my questions. Again, thank you all for your great work. And I'm looking forward to the rest of the conversation.
Yeah, first off, Ariel, thank you very much. That was a really good presentation that you put together. I would call it really pretty high quality, having been involved in Clackamas County, C4 Command and all the hoops they had to jump through. They had some issues in Clackamas County and one of the big issue in Clackamas County, of course, is the equal divide between rural and urban. And, and that, that kind of direction that they want to go. I thought what they did under circumstances was really good. It was their, the discussion was led in part by Milwaukee, which put in a lot of time and effort into their plan. And so when I look at what the considerations are that were asked for, I go back to Councilor Pratt's comment about, I would start with option C because it's going to allow us to include everything from that, from the, from the starting point. But as we move forward, I think we're going to find the community involvement focuses us in on other areas. And then for the considerations for which targets are most important, you might as well have said, Councilor Morrison, which one of your five kids do you love the most? And I'm just going to cherry pick two and then also give an example of, of finding out what's already there, which we would do with the GH G inventory. Transportation Republic Trash already has a program to convert their trucks to electric. We currently are not in, even in that conversation. And so as we move forward, getting them involved with their, with their efforts that are already underway would be a pretty easy. You know, sort of picking the, the fruit from the lowest part of the tree. In addition, Tiger Tuolton School District has already started moving some of their buses over to natural gas. That was part of that, that a huge contract change, I think it might have been three years ago now. And that was part of that, that first student refused or was not interested in making that kind of commitment to climate change. So, and then urban farm and land use, as we continue to develop the Salt Creek. And as we start to look to Stafford, I think there's an excellent opportunity to be early in the game in terms of forming a climate plan that helps our city, helps our environment. And then finally, Megan, I know you know this, but you know, two years ago, there was a carbon tax that the legislature tried to pass and had it passed, it would have given funding for this kind of plan and also funding for things like, say, electric vehicles that cities wanted to purchase when they're old vehicles. And by the way, that'd be another cherry pick to me. It, it didn't fail. The past committee, it actually was the third, it was number three on the items and numbers to vote on and had the votes to pass when the Republicans walked out and brought everything to a halt. I have noticed that that is back again and that is almost sure this time to pass. They're not going to let it wait and go to the last day of the session. It was all ironed out. They got rural on board, some of rural on board, but enough to make it palatable. And then there will be funds in there for certain things and we want to take that into consideration as we move forward. And those are my comments and my thoughts.
Other questions or comments? Bridget?
If we're gonna move into comments and deliberations, I'd like to also, I concur with Councilor Morrison. I think that, you know, when I'm a a practitioner, a health practitioner, you know, we need a baseline of functioning. And so to understand what our baseline is so that we can see measurable improvement and have measures that show our success, tell the community what we're doing and also any funders that we have, I think is fundamental for good practice. I also find that doing a comprehensive assessment, if I were going to just talk to somebody about their family life, but not about their health and not look at all the systems, I wouldn't be able to do a good analysis and I wouldn't end up necessarily with the proper diagnosis. And I think in many ways, looking at what we're dealing with, with our environment, especially when we're already facing crisis with fires. I mean, we couldn't go outside this summer. We had the worst air quality in the world at one point. And that doesn't just include sitting in traffic on our streets daily when we're operationalized outside of COVID. So I think that understanding how that works and also some of the integrating with the current systems that we have operationally and how we can upgrade that and integrate that, whether it's our tree program, all the work that, all that, I know a lot of our departments are doing great work. And I think it's a really great way to highlight where we're already at and grow in a mindful way with community engagement, which I really like. And gosh, I feel like I had one more point. Oh, I also like the idea of partners. So business community partners and what potential partnerships we have, whether like Councilor Morrison said, it's the republic or we have power companies that are right here in our backyard right now. We have a lot of transportation that runs through this area. And how do we have that conversation with our community in a way that's positive and informative and benefits us all? So those are the kind of things I'm thinking about as well, as, as well as, as we stretch into our urban growth boundaries. How are we planning for the health and wellbeing of our residents? And not just our residents, but also our, our residents that are others, that we, we take care of, other animals. And you know, we're obesity now and those types of things. So I'm really excited about this. It feels like an early Christmas present. And I really appreciate the report and I hope our community is tuning in as well and also is happy with the direction that we're going.
All right. I have, I've got a couple of questions. I've been waiting. Just guess it. So Ariel, first question I have is going back to Metro's Climate Smart Strategy. Back in 2014, I was on city council and Metro met significant pushback on their climate smart strategy from cities. And that a lot of cities were not supportive at all, sort of things Metro wanted to do. So since 2014, I know some mindsets have changed, especially when it comes to climate and reacting to climate action and the change in the climate. Have, did you run across anything that what Metro has done since 2014 with the, with the smart, with climate smart strategy? Because it seemed to have its moment in the sun, if you will, bad pun, but then disappear.
Yeah, that's a great question. I, beyond the climate smart strategy, I actually didn't see a lot around anything else that Metro had been doing specifically around that strategy. I, when I was doing interviews, though, I did talk with people who are working with Metro around climate action planning, their specific cities or jurisdictions. And they, they felt that Metro was a positive partner in the strategies that they were adopting together.
All right. They had a lot of goals and it was divvied out between different cities, different parts of Metro. And depending what city it was, you know, if they were going to have the ability to meet those goals. And then what happened if you didn't? That was the biggest thing cities were worried about is what would Metro do if you didn't meet those goals? Okay. Second thing is, you mentioned fairly quickly that Lake Oswego had was intending to get a consultant but couldn't find one. Could you go back to that? That, that has a concern to me that folks are mentioning, we might want to pursue this and, you know, for our P out, but Lake Oswego couldn't find someone to do it?
My understanding of that process is that council decided not to get a consultant and so relied solely on the staff member to complete the climate action plan.
Right. And then I know you said it might be apples, oranges, but I'm looking at, you know, the city of the size of Beaverton spending $90,000 on it versus the city of Milwaukee spending $150,000. And just wondering, you mentioned that Beaverton did it as part of their community visioning project?
Yeah, so my belief of the, the reason, the difference of the cost is simply Beaverton chose not to do any community engagement. And the other cities, their increased cost is because they did do community engagement. They, yeah, they, they had chosen to piggyback off of the community visioning process instead. And so the cost wasn't associated with the climate action plan.
Okay.
Well, I'll just add to that. So for several of the cities that Ariel interviewed, they estimated that 40% of their entire budget was community engagement efforts. And many of them hired two consultants through the process, both a technical expert to do the greenhouse gas inventory and development of the plan, and then a community engagement consultant to lead and assist on the community engagement efforts.
All right. So I'm gonna pick on community engagement, as was mentioned before. You're gonna want representatives from the business community and your residents in the time of COVID now. I'm just wondering how you would get that engagement? How, do you know how the, the other cities did their engagement? Was it through meetings? Was it through email? How did they get that engagement?
That's a great question. Yeah, they used a variety of different strategies and all of the plans that I've shown here have adopted pre-COVID. So most of their engagement was pre-COVID, except for Clackamas County. So Clackamas County might be a good place to look to see how they're starting their process. But all of them had some sort of online component already, either through open house showing, through an iterative process, maybe what the committees have come up with as ideas and giving community feedback or through email surveys, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions I had. You made it through. Congratulations. Bridget?
I forgot two points. One was, and going to your point, Mayor, as far as community engagement, especially with the mitigation around natural disasters, I think integrating communications with CERT teams might be advantageous. And my other point is we have representation here from Suzanne Bonamici. And she's our only Pacific Northwest representative on the National Climate Action Plan. And I also think talking with staff about best practices at the local levels might be an opportunity that we have here, especially being in her district.
All right. So at this point, we, does Councilor want to give direction for, to staff on one of these three options? I had to see Valerie's hand up.
I would like to reiterate what Councilor Kellogg said, and that if we're gonna do this, let's do it right and do option C.
Let's see Bridget's thumbs up. I think that's what Paul said, too. Thumbs up. And Maria, Maria wants to think about it a little bit more or?
Uh, no, I'm fine. I just, yeah, I, I think we can, we can move forward. I mean, option three, it's definitely the best ways. If we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it the right way and it's all of it instead of one, two, or, you know, kind of thing.
Okay.
Also want, but I do, I guess this is where the community input will be after this, right? Okay, then yes.
Right. Yeah, I'm finding seeing an option C as far as a staff coming back with a proposal and a RFP, not to issue RFP, but the draft of an RFP or whatever you're gonna bring us back, basically so I can see what I'm gonna get in option C and an estimated cost before we go full hog on it. Because I'm just, again, with COVID going on, I gotta keep in mind costs and ongoing costs of the city. And if Congress is gonna go off its duff and do things, so I gotta, in my mind, prioritize what we're gonna be spending on next year. So I'd like to see what you come back with as far as a plan for pursuing option C.
We can do that.
All right. Any other comments? So Ariel, you still with us for a little bit longer or you wrap this up and you go back to studies or what?
I, just this project, so I'll be wrapping up probably this week.
All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for all your efforts. This was a terrific presentation and report.
Thank you for the opportunity.
One of my favorite cities in Oregon is Gold Beach, so. It's a beautiful place. Thanks again. All right. So moving on to item number two, which is a Tuolton Moving Forward Third Annual Report. This is Jeff and me, or Jeff?
I think we're, we're gonna tag team a little bit. I will start out. So Jeff Hawks, Public Works Director. Good evening, Mayor and Council, here tonight to share with you our third annual report, which is pretty exciting. I'm gonna share screens. And let me know if that worked. Can you see me? All right, great. Yeah, so tonight, so 30 annual report. So we did the first annual report back in 2018, shortly after we got started on the program and then did a bunch of work that year and the following year and then this year. So that's pretty exciting. We'll walk through a bunch of what we have done. See if I can get this to go. So tonight we'll review some of the milestones. We've talked a lot about this, so some will sound familiar. It's pretty exciting. We'll celebrate some of the successes that we've had this year. Highlight some of the coming attractions. And then in the spring, 2021, which is amazing, we're at 2021. It's amazing we made it through 2020. We will be back in the spring to talk about our quarterly report. And then as always, you can go to tuoltonmovingforward.com. And then, as always, you can go to tualtonmovingforward.com to monitor our progress. So we're often updating that website and trying to keep more information there and using that really as an interactive tool with the people that want to know more about the program. So we're still moving forward. So 2018, in May, the voters approved this. We got started and had our program manager onboard by January of 2019. And we haven't really slowed down much. So in 2020, we did 10 more projects. We have eight projects underway. And if you remember back in 2018, 2019, we kind of started with some of the smaller projects and then we've really been spending a lot of effort on larger projects. And so you're going to start to see some of those around town this summer. So reminder of who our team is. So we have an owner's rep, Alter Planning and Design. That's Katie Magle. And then Murray Smith is our program management team. So they've got a whole bunch of sub consultants work on this. Troy Bowers is our program manager on their side. And then we have a lot of public engagement and communication work. We use Barney Worth and Alter Planning and Design tag team, he knows depending on what it is we're doing. And that's a hugely important part of the program is just making sure that we're out talking with people and listening to people and really doing the program that the voters asked us to do. So this map, every time I see it now, I think it is, it is really full. It started out, you know, the first year, just a few circles here and there of things that were underway. And now it is cluttered. It has a lot of stuff going on. So we've got 14 completed projects, eight more projects are currently underway. We will be back in January to talk with you kind of about that next big wave of work that we're going to get started on as well. Uh, so 2020 was a year of construction. I'm going to say 2021 is also going to be a year of construction. It might actually make 2020 look like it wasn't busy. We have so many things in the hopper right now. So just super quickly on this slide, upper left-hand corner is Tuolton Road and then Sweet and moving across the screen and the high school project and then the steel plate for the high school project as well. And then Marquee down in the lower center and then Garden Corner Curve. So all of those things are happening this year. It was a pretty crazy year for construction. So Boons Ferry Road at the high school. So we're mostly done. We're just doing some punchless items now. That project built mid-block crosswalk from Alabama over to the south lot of the high school. And I think that's going to be really awesome when schools back in session and give people a much safer way to cross Boons Ferry. It included a mid-block or a mid-crossing pedestrian refuge, which we, you won't see on all of our locations, but in this location with the higher speed traffic makes a lot of sense to let people have a place to get out of, out of traffic if they're feeling unsafe as they cross the road there. And then we also built a bunch of sidewalk and filled in sidewalk gaps along here. So this project was a little bit unique in that we combined it with our pavement maintenance program this year. And so Bert Olheiser's team was doing pavement maintenance. We combined them into one, one overall project, hired one contractor to do everything. And so it looks a lot different than this photo now. If you go out there, it's got fresh new pavement everywhere, new paint stripes. I think it looks pretty good, so. And the Soma Lane near Marquee. So this was a project that felt really good to do. Marquee on one side is the community center, on the other side is the assisted care center. And there was not really a comfortable safe way to get across the street. And so this this view is really standing at the, at the community center, kind of looking across to the care center. And you can see the little yellow square down there is the edge of the crosswalk and it's got rapid flashing beacons there so that people can make a way more direct route between their two facilities, so. And then we had eight more projects, way too many to talk about everyone. But Orland Road, that was out by the, by Bridgeport Elementary School. So that one's finished up as well. Ninetieth and Sweet, that serves a whole bunch of folks that live in the condominiums and apartments and walk over towards Police Department and Community Park in that direction. We added rapid flashing beacons and finally finished the project at PGE. So that one, we started with the crosswalk a few years ago and, and now it is a complete pedestrian crossing, much safer. Kaiser Permanente, I'll talk about that one real quick, just because it was such a feel-good project from a a lot of folks on the front lines for the COVID pandemic, work at Kaiser and walk across the street to the mall to get lunch and, and food and and so there's a ton of pedestrian traffic there. It's also ends up being a fairly high-speed road. People come off to Alton Sherwood Road. So this crosswalk now is a continental crosswalk with rapid flashing beacons. It's really visible. And it should make this location way safer for our frontline defenders. And then Garden Corner Curve. So this says, construction begins. We're, we're right in the midst of construction. So we, we tore up a bunch of stuff out there this, this summer and fall. We took a little bit of break, a little bit of a break from our contractor to let PGE come in and underground power lines there. And then they should be done with that sometime by the end of December. And then our contractor will be back in January and February. And so sort of hot off the presses, we're looking at a road closure in January, February. So we've got Megan's team has a bunch of public outreach, reaching out right now, letting people know. We met with police this week to talk about how we could reduce the number of cut-through traffic in the neighborhood as we do this. And so it's kind of a wintertime dry run. I'm guessing it won't be super dry for our summertime closure. It's next July through October. So a lot of construction out there. The contractor is doing a good job. We're working with the neighbors and and so the next big thing you will see will be that January closure, January and February. And then largely just we're, we split the closure up into two parts so we can really try to not impact business at Garden Corner Nursery. I mean, their prime season is March through July. And so we have been really working with them to make sure that we're trying to have as little impact on them as we can. And then coming soon, we've been talking about this one for a while. I think we're really close now to starting construction next summer. So we're still working with ODOT on the Tuolton Sherwood Road and I-5 or Tuolton Sherwood Road at I-5 with Wash, with Washington County and with ODOT. So we're waiting on some county comments. We've got ODOT's comments back. We expect to get through design this spring and should see us moving some dirt this summer and getting that project moving. So that's the one that will save about 30 seconds time. It's, it's, should be a pretty impactful project when it's done. And that one is moving along well. And then Martin Aziz Sager. So this is another big one. This project replaces this really awkward multi-lane four-way stop with a traffic signal. New bike lanes, new sidewalks. Really, the primary thing here is just fixing this, what is a really confusing intersection for folks to drive. We will be back again after the first of the year to talk about property acquisition on this one. So we're, there are two pieces of property we need to, we need to procure. One is sandalwood condominiums on the south side, and then the other one is the current property on the south side. So need strips of land for both of those property owners. So, but the plans on this one are basically right at 100%. So they are ready to roll as soon as we get the property acquired. And then we're still using our report card. And essentially what this does, it's, it's nice now because it's got so many things filled in. All the dots mean we're doing stuff. And so it's nice to be able to see kind of where we are and how we're doing relative to the budget. So speaking of budget, so we have, we built about $2.2 million worth of projects. Right now, we've got about 12.1 underway. And that's a lot of work. So the Maria Smith team just has a ton of stuff going on right now for all of those projects. Either they're in various stages of construction or design. And then we have another about $5.7 million that we'll be back, kind of moving that forward to after the first of the year. And then we've done a ton of public outreach. So Megan is going to jump in and talk about this.
Yeah. And I'll just say, so in your agenda packet, you saw the annual report that we put together. This year, we're trying something a little bit different. We're printing them out. Of course, that's usual. But then we're also going to mail them to all Tuolton residents so that they will actually get them in their mailboxes. And the CIO annual meetings didn't happen this year, didn't happen in the same way at least. And so that was one of our primary outreach techniques to get general information about the program and then project-specific information for those neighborhoods. So this year, we're also including an insert that will be CIO-specific and talk about projects that have already been constructed and projects that are on their way. And we didn't necessarily do the math ahead of time, but it was exciting to learn that we have constructed at least one project in each of the CIO areas. So each CIO will have a completed project on their report. So those will be going out in the mail either later this month or early January. So as Jeff said, public outreach is a big part of the program. We've got a few different audiences that we consider as putting together our message. So this slide talks about the news media being one of those audiences. So we produce maybe five to 10 different press releases each year on a variety of different topics. And we've seen articles be picked up by the Tuolton Life, of course, Pamplin's papers on a variety of different topics stemming from specific projects to the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program. And of course, our sidewalk art program. Next slide. Uh, of course, you, as the city council, is also one of our primary audiences. So we're here at least quarterly, although you've been seeing a lot of us lately to give general updates on the program and then specific updates as needed. I do have an image file of the bus, if you'd like that. I'm not sure we sent that out earlier. So I'll make sure I do that after this meeting. But we'll see it in our swag packs next year, I'm sure. Next slide. And then lastly, our probably most largest audience, certainly at least, is the public. So we've talked about this a little bit so far. And a lot of the techniques that we've leaned on in the early stages of the bond program, like kitchen table meetings and door hangers, aren't things that we want to do right now, given, given how the world has changed. And so we've had to lean more heavily on some of those other techniques, like email updates or webinars or virtual neighborhood meetings. And so we've done that and we've seen a variety of successes as part of that. So on the slide, you've got a whole list of things that we do now and that we have done before and will likely hope to do in the future. But we've, we've spent a lot of time curating this list and figuring out which items are the most impactful, depending on the project. Next slide. Uh, and then I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff for this one.
All right. So we will be back this spring. It's hard to believe it's time to start talking about our next round of Neighborhood Traffic Safety Projects. So it's kind of this continual program where we've got our team designing away on the current ones. And while they're doing that, we're asking about the ones we want to do for the next summer. And so we are in the process right now of figuring out what that's going to look like next year. I can't remember how many we got, but I think there were like 230 individual projects last year and we're building six. So we have quite a list put together. And then whatever we get from this year, when we solicit additional projects, add to that list and go back and prioritize and figure out what makes the most sense around the city. I think that is the end of our annual report. So opening it up for discussion. And let me know if you want me to stop sharing my screen.
Um, if you could, just for a few moments, unless someone wants to pop back. So be ready with that.
All right.
All right. Now she can see everybody else again. Questions for Jeff or Megan? Paul?
Yeah, just real quick. Jeff, it's been an absolute honor to work with you and to have you on staff. And I, the the way you interact both with the council and with the community is nothing short of amazing. And you can say, well, no, I just answered my phone, but it is amazing what you do. And I'll give you the perfect example. You remember when we were having all kinds of problems with that light single there by McDonald's on the railroad tracks and the complications from that. And for about the 10th time, someone asked me, who do I, you know, when are they going to do something about that intersection? And I said, we need to talk to Jeff Fox at the staff. Oh, I've already talked to him. And so you hadn't fixed the problem then, but you had already engaged with them. And that to me was the, that's the most important first step. And, and you always take that, that first step. And so I look forward to sitting in the audience and hearing updates on this. This has always been, I know, I'm sure maybe you've been, it feels the same way as this Councilor Kellogg, but this has always been one of, one of my babies in terms of the teamwork from the council to be able to put this whole bond together. The incredible cooperation from all seven, well, the mayor and the seven, six counselors and the community. And, and part of that was, I think, the community's trust in you that you do it right. And you clearly have. And thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Valerie?
I was, I actually wanted to just say, this is so great. Like 2020 has been, come like kind of a term for everything negative happening. And it's so great to see all these great accomplishments happen this year in our city. So thank you very much.
Other questions, comments, nice comments? Negative comments, but I don't think we're going to hear any negative ones.
I say, here, here. Uh, what Valor, Councilor Pratt said, it's nice to see good news. And I will say, I took a walk over to Filati for the Donuts event and walked by the sidewalk art on my way and the stamps that the Tuolton Arts Committee has been working on. And so it's so neat to see, I mean, such a, it's so important to get, address the congestion and the busy intersections and the safety, but also to be integrating the creativity and the volunteers and the community in ways like with the sidewalk arts project and the, the box wraps that we're working on and things like that. So I just also want to say thank you and thank you for such strong community engagement at so many different.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in if I could. Thanks. Um, I think this has always been kind of the gold standard for community projects. And I think it's one of the best things that we've done as a council in a number of years, from the, you know, the thoughtfulness, the way that the community, community can be involved continuously. Um, I mean, submitting ideas on a day-to-day basis if they want to. The way that we laid out the goals and priorities and, you know, went to the voters with a very strong idea of what we wanted to have accomplished and then was able to just tick down the list of all the things that you know, were able to accomplish. Plus, allow for continuous community involvement and submitting of projects, which is one of the parts I love the most about this. And I feel like going forward, when we've been having discussions about parks funding and, you know, how to close the gap in our needs with our Parks Department, you know, I think we can really look to this project as kind of, you know, the, the gold standard of how to approach a partnership, a funding partnership with ourselves and the community that has excellent results and makes us, you know, very good stewards of the money that the community votes for us to apply to these programs. So you know, as we continue and we look more for perks funding and ideas for that and funding packages, I say we use, this is the template. And, um, you know, I just, I'm super proud of this project and I just think that it's fantastic. And Jeff, you have just, you and Uma have done an outstanding job of executing for us. And we're, you know, it would be a great program on its own merit, but because we have you working the program, it's become, become really an exceptional one. So well done. And thank you.
Very much. I appreciate it. We have an awesome team of a ton of people. Makes it work.
All right. I got those in my desk right here. All right. Any other comments, questions? Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a quick clarification. On the closing of the garden corners in January and February, I, the notice that I got from Mary Stewart said they'd be working from eight to four. Does that mean it's closed only from eight to four or is it closed 24/7?
That is a good question, and I will check on that and get back to you.
All right. Oh, and all the other nice stuff people said about you, I agree with you.
All right. Anyone else? Yep. Uh, just real quick. Yeah. Thanks, Jeff and the team for all the efforts on this. That's one, this, as was mentioned before, everyone's doing a great job on this. It's very well received, the community. And when I particularly get feed- And what I particularly get feedback from is other mayors of other cities, pretty envious of how well this is going. And they look at it as a model like Council President Grimes is saying, for them to try to emulate on how well it's been run. And the community feedback gets involved. So kudos to you and your staff and the team for making this work. We couldn't be more proud about it. All right. Anything else? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have, we're now up to. Item number three in our work session, which is our community meeting and agenda review, communications and roundtable. So tonight, does anyone have any questions on what's on the consent agenda? All right. Do we have any questions about? We don't have a lot of time for communication, so I'm going back and forth about communications. If we should start. Now and finish up, or just take a little bit of a break, because we're all going to get weepy-eyed here pretty soon. Let's go ahead and take a break and we'll do our roundtable and council communications at the end of the city council meeting. And I think that's it. As far as the two proclamations, I'm going to invoke privilege and I'll make it, I'll read the two proclamations. For our two departing counselors. Anything else? All right. So let's go ahead and we'll end this work session and we'll take a break and commence, commence our. Regular city council meeting at seven o'clock. See you in about sixteen minutes.